Call the meeting to order for the December 13, 2022, regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that everyone is present, but I should note that Councilmember Dixon did resign from her seat in order to take her seat on the State Assembly.
Thank you. We now have invocation by Reverend Canon Cindy Evans Voorhees. Does she present it? Yes. Please stand.
Gracious God, we are thankful for the people of Newport Beach and for those individuals who continue and for those who have come forward to serve in elected positions on our behalf. With their solemn office comes public trust, so we pray for fair, balanced, and collaborative leadership as a new mayor and mayor pro tem are selected for our community tonight. Endow them with all both wisdom and humility and along with the administrative staff. Inspire them that they may lead us in ties of mutual respect which form our civic life. Fill us all with a renewed commitment to work for the people of our city. Grant us vision to work for goals and purposes larger than ourselves and the zeal to carry our vision forward. Give us a spirit of joy this holiday season as we continue to build a community worthy of the human person. Amen.
Thank you. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. We have a consent calendar, and any non-agenda items who wish to speak... Speakers, let's speak on that. Please come forward now. Are there any individuals who would like to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, Taylor. Yes. All right, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Rose, and I would be like to talk about on condemning the Iranian government. On this earth, in this earth, in this very pure farm, let us sow nothing, let us scatter nothing but the seeds of kindness and love. In God we trust, or as Qian-Pirfalak would have said, "In the name of gods of the rainbow," that is before the morality police shot him. Hello, Mayor and the City Council. Today I'm here to represent my Iranian brothers and sisters and their God-given rights. From the day you voted no on condemning the Iranian government, 485 people have been killed, 18,000 were arrested, and 5,000 were disabled. Every second of your silence gives the Islamic Republic regime the right to torture and execute the innocent. We're grateful to live in a country where we can practice human rights, but why shouldn't other countries have the same... not have the same opportunity? Why shouldn't you stand with Iran and when they need you the most? I came across a video the other day which made me sick to my stomach. A policeman of uniform approaches the gates of University of Tehran and flashes the children and then loads his gun, an indication that I will first rape you and then murder you, showing no mercy. This regime is tearing families apart, and this is injustice. Although I do understand that you guys are prioritizing the needs of your Newport citizens, and what is happening in Iran may not affect them, but the events that are happening in Iran is affecting your people, and here's why. My father works for the post office in Newport Beach. He can go visit his family or see his hometown, which is a basic human right, because if he were to go back to Iran, the government will capture him, abduct him, and then kill him within two days, just because he works for the American government and he might be a potential spy. Newport has one of the largest populations of Iranians in Orange County. A very vast majority of Iranians work or live in Newport Beach. Hearing and seeing what is happening to their Iranian brothers and sisters, they get depressed, they get hopeless, and everyone knows how mental health is very important. With your citizens being depressed, they can't really work. Their thoughts are constantly occupied. How will they be able to support their mayor and the council if they're not doing anything to support their beliefs or their mental health? So if Iranian citizens of Newport Beach don't work, they can't shop. If their city council won't support them, then they won't vote. If you vote no again on this matter, then it proves you don't care about your citizens' health. So please, Mayor and the City Council, stand with your Iranian citizens of Newport Beach and vote yes on condemning the republic... condemning the Islamic Republic regime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Tanaz. So surely members of this council are aware of the atrocities that have taken place within the past three months all across Iran. The sadistic response of the Islamic Republic of Iran to those exercising freedom of speech have resulted in nationwide internet shutdown, killings of 475, imprisonment of more than 18,000, and two publicly announced abrupt executions. But any number issued by this state's sponsor of terror is speculative. We all know of their attempts to cover up and their 43-year track record of no mercy, which is why our fear and our anguish is palpable and certainly valid. Now is the best time to showcase our collective agreement. We propose solutions that the City Council of Newport Beach can implement. One, please vote yes on passing the resolution condemning the government of Iran. Your vote is a way to leverage your platform to show your stance on topics like human rights, physical and psychological torture, rape, gender apartheid, and quality of life for all. Two, advocate for the expulsion of diplomats and agents affiliated with the regime, some that even reside in Orange County. Recall those ambassadors and freeze their assets. And three, just as I am speaking up right now, I implore you to do the same with your higher-up government officials. Urge them to take strong, rapid, and effective action in support of the people's wants. Call them, write to them. Now, I understand that some members of the last council meeting did not want a resolution to be passed. To them, I say, don't choose to follow the bureaucratic structure, which is when your actions are dictated by what the rules or laws want. Don't fall into ritualism that confines you from doing what's right. I quote directly from the United Nations. Government obligations under international human rights law extend to all levels and branches. While national and regional governments have important roles to play in the promotion and protection of human rights, local governments are at the forefront of bringing human rights to all. Our demands are legitimate from our local governments. Please relay them. I thank you for your verbal condemnation, but that is not enough. Your words are void when they misalign with your actions. Please reconsider and vote in support of the Iranian-American community in Newport Beach. Right now, as I'm speaking, 28 are sentenced to death. They can be executed any moment now. I implore you to help us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for your time and the opportunity to address this body. My name is Shereen. I'm a business owner here in the beautiful city of Newport Beach. I'm grateful to live in a country that granted me freedom to live my life on my own terms. I married who I wanted, even having different fates. I got to study what I wanted and get to wear what I want. Today, I stand here and voice my view without fear of retribution and being silenced. I'm blessed to live in a country that has been the beacon of hope for countless people, a country that stands for freedom and equal rights. Myself, along with all Iranian-Americans, are experiencing sleepless nights, going through roller coasters of emotions as we watch the people of the country we left behind in pursuit of our own freedom. They suffer daily by the hands of their brutal regime. I'm glad that the community of Iranian-Americans have finally been able to show the world that we are not the same as the regime in Iran, that we want for Iranian people what we have here. That from day one of this brutal regime in Iran, my people have been taken hostage for 43 years. I have spent more than half of my life in the United States. I blocked lots of bad memories so I could make happier ones here. Unfortunately, the recent events have made it impossible to look... to block those memories any longer. I know every one of us Iranian-Americans who's privileged to live here has had some kind of traumatic experience caused by the brutal regime in Iran. Each and every one of us has a story and has had a journey that has led us to this moment, so we cannot look away anymore and just continue life as if nothing has happened. I am aware that the City Council's first and foremost duty is to the residents of this beautiful city. We are residents too. We contribute to this society. We're your friends, we're your neighbors, we're part of you. Government starts at the local level. Needless to say, what is decided here in this local level will collectively affect policy on a larger scale. If we make a statement to the world that this city and this county stands with its Iranian-American community, who's grieving our comrades' suffering of rape, torture, and death, maybe, just maybe, we can affect the bigger picture. Furthermore, the Iranian regime is a terrorist organization. Not long ago, they kidnapped Ruhalah Zam, an Iranian journalist from France, transferred him to Iran, and hanged him. They attempted to assassinate Saudi Arabian ambassador to the United States right here on U.S. soil. They attempted to kidnap Masih Ali Najad, another journalist who's living in exile in New York, and take her to Venezuela via sea to ultimately kill her. She's been under FBI protection for some time now. The list of their terroristic activities goes on and on. Our community has been trying to tell the world that no one is safe from this brutal regime. We too are worried about the borders. Their influence in South American countries like Venezuela and Nicaragua has not received enough attention in the news. When we talk about border security, we cannot ignore their illegal activities that include smuggling drugs from the Middle East to South American countries and from there into the United States. We cannot ignore these on a local level, and we cannot ignore them on the national level.
It's only three minutes per person tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. And if you plan to speak, feel free to get close to the podium. Next speaker.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Farah Hosseini. I'm a proud Iranian-American who has lived here for 40 years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here, to speak, and lay out my experience and feeling as an Iranian woman. I'm here today standing as a human who has touched by what I had experienced and seen for the short period of time visiting my family in Iran, where the Women Rising Revolution happened to take place. As I promised myself after returning home to the U.S., where I'm fortunate to feel free to speak out and share what I have witnessed, endured, and suffered from during my stay in Iran. On the 40th-day anniversary of the brutal killing of Mahsa Amini, which I'm sure you're all aware of what happened, I was in Tehran, the capital city of Iran, where I heard chaos. Looking through a window from my mother's apartment located in one of the busiest streets of the city, I was stunned at how terrifying and oppressive the regime's brutal forces were on the populace. I saw a so-called special unit police patrol driving black Humvees on... or motorcycles, were controlling all the streets and randomly shooting at any human coming across, not considering age or gender. I also saw snipers standing on the rooftops of the buildings, crosspointing their weapons at peaceful protesters. Imagine? These were just ordinary people, men and women peacefully expressing their belief of judgment that was not given towards the vanished life of an innocent human, happened to be a young woman, unknowingly didn't obey the brutal and unjust rule of a regime that have been oppressive of human and especially women's rights. Ladies and gentlemen, as far as we all know, this movement showed the depth of the anger and frustration of the whole world, especially the Iranians in Iran and abroad. If not only about one moment... it's not only about one moment. It's about all families that have been taking the opportunity to freely live their lives the way they chose, which led to all Iranians to stand and shout, "Enough is enough." Death to the dictators, women, life, freedom. They also were yelling and shouting, "We will fight, we will die, but we will get our Iran and freedom back." As The Guardian reported on December 8, 2022, Iranian security forces are targeting women at the protest. (Clerk claps.)
There's only three minutes for public comment this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. If you plan to speak on this or any other item, please come forward now. Yes.
Good evening, members of City Council. As I'm speaking, Islamic Republic is ordering for rape, torture, and murder of its own unarmed citizens. In 1988, Islamic Republic executed about 30,000 people. They currently have over 18,000 peaceful prisoners... peaceful protesters in prison who are at risk of execution. 18,000 people include Tummah Salih, Dr. Qara Hassanlu, Salman Yasin, Fariame Karimi, Aryan Farzalnia. Islamic Republic is not only a threat to Iranians, but to the entire world. They're number-one supporter of terrorism all around the world, and they chant "Death to America." They already have shown their desire. Therefore, we must stand firmly and send a clear message that we stand with the people who chant "Death to Islamic Republic" rather than people who chant "Death to America." Please stand by your constituents demanding to condemn this terrorist regime. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. First of all, I want to say congratulations for the four council members I'll be storing tonight. My comments are mostly towards them because they'll be taking the dais next month, and since they'll be the majority once they take council, it's extremely important for them to know what has been happening since November. I'm grateful again to Mayor Muldoon and now Assemblywoman Diane Dixon for their unconditional support. My name is Hengam Abraham. Many of you know me as Henny. I am an Iranian-born American. I always say, born in Iran, made in America, because I was 14 years old when I came here. And everything I know, from my first job at the age of 15 to going to college, getting married, having kids, raising my kids, and getting involved in politics as of 2020, has been happening in this great country. Now, if this girl would have stayed in Iran, like the story I've told before, like my mother said, I would have not made it to my 20s to be able to do any of these. I shaved my head when I was 12 years old to protest the mandatory hair cover. And God smiled on my parents, and we won the green card lottery, and we came here in September of 2000, which is now almost 23 years ago. I'm standing in front of you not as a free Iranian-American woman, but as that 12-year-old girl who would not have a future to stand in front of you and be a representative for this great community of Iranians in America. If you're looking at those pictures that my community is holding, those are the people who have been... who have already been murdered, most of them under the age of 18. The youngest was seven, and there's currently a three-year-old that's sitting in jail awaiting whatever's going to happen to her. Now, I'm going to switch it around for the last minute and a half and tell you that is a proud Republican community outreach for the Iranian community of Orange County. I am so proud that we have four Republicans being sworn in. Even though this is a nonpartisan seat, we know politics plays a role in every election. So I'm asking you, since our party is the party of freedom, since our party is the party of we, the people, stand by the people who are asking you to support them, no matter what. I am asking you because it is not just the Iranian people that are hurting right now. People in China, people in Italy, people in Brazil, people all over the world are taking to the streets to fight for what we have here. And the least we can do when we are an elected official, no matter what seat we have, whether it's City Council, Water Board, for all I care, or School Board, is to take a stance for justice and take a stance again in human, brutal actions that are happening in the world. We are beyond blessed to live in this great country. I am asking the city of Newport Beach to stand up its Iranian constituents and show us, so we can keep showing up and keep supporting you. May God bless you and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Devin Dwyer. I guess I'm here to lighten it up a little bit. I'm here on behalf of the Newport Beach Doughnut Rowing Club, and I'm here to thank Marshall Duffield for serving as a City Council member and helping us boaters and rowers out there on the water. We appreciate the eight years that you've put in here at the council, and we look forward to seeing you on the water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Muldoon, thank you very much for all your support. We really appreciate it, and we really look forward to the new group of, you know, council members that will be, you know, participating in this effort and hopefully, and hopefully helping us. My name is Farhad Mafi, and what I want to share with you is that in 2015, when over 8 million Iranians were demonstrating against the Islamic Republic of Iran, our President Hussein Obama decided to basically say no to Iranian people and make a deal with Islamic Republic of Iran. The same government that basically, when it was born in Iran, it took 400... it took 52 Americans hostage for 444 days. The same government that basically has been violating human rights from its inception, you know, from the first day that actually started it. The same government that was pretty much, you know, behind killing 300 American Marines in Lebanon, you know, and U.S. didn't, you know, pretty much stayed, did not do anything about it. And so what we are really asking you is, please, think about, you know, the symbolic gesture of this resolution. Yes, it will not directly affect what is happening in Iran, but if right now, four cities, Costa Mesa, Mission Viejo, Fullerton, and Irvine, have already passed this resolution. And Newport Beach being part of this, you know, team, and at the same time, other cities that we are working with, joining this, is a pretty strong voice for us to really go after this, go to Congress and actually ask U.S. Congress to start, you know, condemning the Islamic Republic of Iran. What we are frustrated is that even Joe Biden today is supporting these criminals, you know, and he's not saying anything about it, and he's not condemning this regime. Please keep in mind, when 3,000 Americans were killed in New York, you know, many people were saying, "Well, you know, this isn't really not our issue." Well, they made it our issue. So what Islam... what radical Islam is doing, it is a worldwide issue. And please, whenever you have time, study the Constitution of Islamic Republic, which is available online. In their own constitution, they clearly say that they have one mission, and that mission is to make Islam the dominant religion in the world and make their own version of, you know, religion as the dominant religion. So that's their goal. They're not a regular government that they're going to maintain their activities only in Iran. Their mission, that's why they've been involved in every country in Middle East, and that is something that, you know, today, over, I think, in the last 80 days or so, Iranians are systematically fighting with these people, and we are trying to have basically a new revolution so that we can put an end to this, you know, government and start having a secular democratic system in Iran. Your support, we really greatly appreciate. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If you plan to speak on this item now, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Nusha. I'm just going to say a couple of words quickly. I cannot emphasize the fact that how hard it was for us to hear you guys saying no and how easy it was for you guys to just say no. Basically, by saying no, you're kind of, in my own eyes, and I think whoever is in Persian community here, in our eyes, you're kind of siding with dictators and terrorists. That's what we think. Because they're basically killing people every single day. Within the past two days, they executed two young guys, 23-year-old and 22-year-old, without any courts, without any lawyer's presence. They just executed because they were protesting. So you, by saying no, you're siding with them, and you're not siding with us, and this is the matter of humanity. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on agenda or nine agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to a presentation. I'd like to present a proclamation to Newport Beach Police Department Chief Lewis. I'll read it first, Chief. You can come towards the front so we can all look at how many stars you have on your collar there. After I read it, Chief, I'd love to hear you say a couple words. Raze John... Chief John T. Lewis served the city of Newport Beach for 31 and a half years as a member of the Newport Beach Police Department. Raze Chief Lewis served in a variety of duties, including police cadet, patrol officer, bike officer, field train officer, economic crisis detective, patrol sergeant, professional standard sergeant, patrol lieutenant, support service lieutenant, executive officer, detective division deputy chief, patrol division deputy chief, and chief of police. Raze Chief Lewis is the first employee in the department's history to rise from the rank of police cadet to police chief. Chief Lewis was a graduate of several advanced law enforcement training courses, including the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute... sorry, supervisory, the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training Command College, and was elected as adjunct faculty at the Golden West College and Criminal Justice Training Center in Cal... in California State University of Long Beach Center for Justice Research and Training during his service with the Department of Newport Beach Police. Raze Chief Lewis held executive leadership positions on local, county, state, and state levels, including Newport Beach and Company Executive Board, president of the Orange County Chiefs and Sheriff Association, Orange County Regional Narcotics Suppression Program, Executive Board, Orange County Regional Computer Forensic Laboratory Local Executive Board, and the California Police Chief Association Board of Directors. And Raze Chief Lewis completed a service with... will have completed a service with the city of Newport Beach on December 30, 2022. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, now for the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim that Chief John T. Lewis served honorably and will always be recognized for his 31 and a half years of dedication, a dedicated service to the city. Chief?
Mayor Muldoon, members of City Council, John Lewis, chief of police, I'll be addressing you one last time after these past seven years, and what I can describe has just been an incredible ride for me as a police officer, and to be standing here today is something that I don't think I ever could have dreamed would happen to me. But I can tell you, in all the time that I've been here, really, growing up here in this organization, in this community, as much as... so much has changed, I think it's fair to say, over these past 31 years, what I know has not changed are the great work, the selfless service of the men and women of the Newport Beach Police Department. I'm deeply grateful to have served this storied organization and to be a part of those that are keeping us safe out there every day. So thank you so much for the recognition, and I'm sincerely grateful to have been here, to wear this uniform, and to serve as your police chief. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. (Applause.)
(Clerk claps.) All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.[1739.25][1739.25](Clerk claps.)
[inaudible][1741.25]
activities, and time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilman O'Neil, do you have any announcements or reports?
No, I'll keep it going. Thanks.
Councilman Duffield?
Yeah, I have 10.
Okay. Councilman Brenner?
I have none.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Potem Blom?
I have none.
Great, I have one quick one. Can we put the slide? Thank you. There it is. We do this every year. It's Operation Christmas Announcement. We're collecting new toys, DVDs, and sports equipment now through 12:00 PM on December 23rd at all public city facilities. So please, if you're so inclined, please make a donation, drop off at the locations, including Civic Center, Oasis, Newport Coast Community Center, Arena Park, Newport Beach Libraries, Newport Beach Police and Fire Stations. Now we move on to matters with council members who have asked to be placed on a future agenda, and these are non-discussion items. For consideration is a proposal from Councilwoman Brenner. Consider adopting a resolution declaring that the Newport Beach City Council stands in solidarity with the women, men, and children of Iran and our Iranian-American population who have been impacted by the human rights injustices in that country. Let's vote.
Unanimous six-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read notes of public, writing public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak to each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I also need to announce a recusal on item eight due to real property interests.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil, do you have any items that I had to pull from the consent calendar or conflict to announce related items, one through 11?
None.
Councilman Duffield? Councilman Brenner?
None.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Potem Blom?
I have a recusal on item eight due to real property interests.
Thank you. And I have a conflict on item eight due to potential business interests related to telecom. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion and move the balance, mayor.
I'll, I'll second.
Perfect. We have an amendment to the minutes, and then a recusal from myself and the mayor on item eight, as well as LaLani, the city clerk.
Perfect. So I have a motion and a second. Let's go out to public comments. Any comments on these items, items one through 11? Please come forward now. Jim, come on down. It's your last chance to give comments while I'm here. Okay, that's amazing. Seeing none? Let's vote.
Prior to reading vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance 2022-28, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adopting local coastal program amendment LC 2019-3, as modified by the California Coastal Commission amending Title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code related to the Transfer of Development Rights. Councilmember Brenner, you need to vote.
Oh, sorry. That's okay. I'm a slacker.
The motion carries six-zero.
Excellent. Now on to the reason we're all here, the city council reorganization. Now it's time for December 13, 2022, reorganization part of the meeting. We will be taking public comments regarding reorganization, items 12 through 17, will be taken at this time. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? So it's not quite how we normally do it, but if there are no requests to do so, we then move on to the reorganization. Presentation?
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the city council members, Newport Beach, we'd love to present you, Kevin Muldoon, with the mayor's gavel.
Oh, that's nice. No, thank you. I see you made this from scratch. [applause] This means free meals for life at our restaurant, right?
Correct, yes, absolutely.
And then, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Avery and I have outgoing presentations. Do you want to go you, me, you?
Sure.
Now let's do that.
Councilmember Duffield? I have a gift from the city to you for your service, and it's a clock, and I think a politician should never accept anything that's ticking. Nonetheless, so Marshall Duffy, Duffield, beyond serving eight years on council and being a great representative for his district and for the city of Newport Beach, also served 10 years in the harbor commissions, a total of 18 years of service to the city and the city, myself and the entire council, of course. Thank you so much. Bye.
So, Mayor Muldoon, I will, I'll sit here for just a moment, and I also have a clock. And I have the honor of presenting this to Mayor Muldoon, who finishes his second term as mayor of Newport Beach tonight. You know, over the last eight years, Kevin's been consistent and steadfast in his philosophy and leadership. You knew exactly where he was coming because he had a grounded philosophy before he ran in 2014. It was a philosophy that served him and our city well. Over the last eight years, we've had a substantial reduction in debt and unfunded pension liabilities. We have seen significant revenue increases without a tax increase, thanks in large part to the desirability of living, shopping, and playing in Newport Beach. It is a safer community than it was eight years ago. We've rebuilt fire stations and doubled down on the importance of public safety at a time when many cities were looking the other way. We've reinvested in a back-to-basics program that leaves the city stronger than when you were elected. And for a man of consistency in his public life, it has been really enjoyable to witness the changes in your personal life. Since you were elected, you've been ma, you've been married, and you and Heather have brought into this world two adorable kiddos, Cannon right down there, and then Taylor is, I'm sure, right in the back there. Perfect. You'll now have more time to spend with them in public spots that you have helped maintain and improve, including our beaches and our parks. Godspeed to you and your family, Kevin, and thank you for your service to Newport Beach.
Thank you so much, Will. Thank you. [applause] Will, since you're an attorney, I guess that means I won't be built for the hours of work you're doing.
None.
The, the next, I believe, we have...
I have one more.
Oh, yes, back to Councilman Avery. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey, it's been a pleasure serving with you for four years, and of course, your service goes way beyond that, working with the Corona del Mar Library, I think establishing the Corona del Mar Residents Association, working all the time for the animal shelter, to get it where it is today, being a part of that, and certainly your, your time on harbor, on the Recreation and Parks Committee, Commission for eight years, including being chairwoman of that, of that department, and your constant devotion to the residents of Corona del Mar and their issues in your district and to the people of Newport Beach. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. We have one more presentation, and then we will offer opportunities for Councilman Duffield and Councilwoman Brenner and myself to make comments. I believe a presentation from someone from, is it Sonia Turwisky, from Michelle Steele's office? Is she present? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Turwisky. I am here on behalf of Congresswoman Michelle Steele. I'm here to present a certificate of recognition to Councilwoman Brenner and Councilmember Duffy and Mayor Muldoon. Congratulations, I would say, as you move on to the next phase in your life, and the Congresswoman wishes you all the best, and please accept her gratitude and her thankfulness for everything you've done. So I have the presentation.
Thank you. with, I know the man who loves to speak the most, Councilman Duffield? We'll do a quick picture with outgoing class. All right.
Yeah, they were always afraid of what I was going to say, but I never said anything too bad, did I?
You still got a chance.
Yeah, still have. Yeah. Well, I want to thank everyone, my friends and family who came here. I told them not to, but they did anyway. So thank you. It's actually pretty cool. I didn't know how this was all going to work out. I've been, I've been pretty different about how this was going to end. I think my hero is always Nancy Gardner, where she just says thank you and leaves. And I want to be like her, so I'm not going to go on and on. But I have to say, especially to my family, my kids, who put up with all this, it was quite a journey. Thank you. And then, of course, to the person who is the most important, the boss, Terry, I love her dearly, and for putting up with this. You know, and the vote in the kitchen, when I said, should I do this, was steadfastly no. All across the board, every one of them said no. And I wanted to say no, but others, pretty convincing. But, you know, it hasn't been easy, and politics can be brutal. But Terry, you persevered through all the bad things they said about us, me, and so that, so for that, I'm very grateful. And I promise, I'll never do this again. I love you and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Duffield. Or Councilman Brenner?
I would just like to say thank you to Councilman Duffield because I know he would much rather have been on the bay all of this time than he would have been at this dais, and it was a real sacrifice for him. But I think that the thing that Duffy has to be proud of is the amazing work that was done on the harbor since the eight years you've been on council, and that can never be taken away from you, and it's something that you will always, you and your family will always have the pride of knowing that that made a real difference. So I just want to congratulate you on that. And Kevin, I would like to say to you, thank you for the last year with you as mayor. We have had the shortest council meetings I can ever remember, and during the summer there were so many times that I just went, oh, thank goodness Kevin's mayor, this is going to be over fast. So I appreciate that, and it's been lovely to watch you and your young family, and, and really proud of them and of you. And I'd just like to say that for myself, I'm going to try not to cry. My friends tried to tell me not to come tonight because they didn't want to see me cry, and I said, you know what? When you cry, you care. So I just want you to know what a privilege it has been for me to serve the city that I have been part of for the last 60 years. And all the work that I did in the past was not to get to this point. It was not with the ambition that I would someday be on the council. I decided to run for council for a couple of reasons. I had two goals. My first goal was to show my fellow citizens that it's not as bad as they think it is so that hopefully more of them would do it. I may have failed in that. I'm not sure. I'm, I'm afraid a few of them will never run for office because of what they have seen. But I would like to encourage more people to do so because it really is rewarding. It, you know that you're doing something important when you're here. It is onerous, and it is time-consuming, and, you know, you get, you get tired of all the meetings and all the emails and everything, but at the same time, you know that you're doing something that has a greater good for a bigger purpose. And I thought it was really interesting hearing our Iranian community speaking tonight because I think it's so easy for us in the United States of America to forget how blessed we are and how remarkable it is that we can say things that other people don't like, and we don't get killed or imprisoned for it. We still get to speak and, and try to state our truth, and that was my other goal in serving on council was that I wanted to show that this job could be done with grace and kindness and intelligence and integrity and not with mean spiritedness. I have to say that I really came to like the members of the, of the council that I have served with, and even when I disagreed with them on things, it was possible, in my mind, for us to disagree and to still be agreeable. And I think that is the goal that I would like to see in the future, is that if we can get away from some of the nastiness and some of the mean spiritedness and really understand that even if we disagree, we're all members of the same team. And so, you know, I don't know how successful I've been in that goal, but I think that, you know, people have told me that they, I felt like I failed because I didn't get all the problems solved that I wanted to get solved during my term. And many people have told me that I have inspired them to be willing to run for public office in the future, especially young people. That really has meant more than anything to me, and it's kind of, I, I got to the point that I said, okay, so my purpose was not to solve all these problems. My purpose, perhaps, was just to inspire one or two other people to do this job with dignity and respect for their fellow council members and respect for all the citizens, and to do it in a way that actually benefits our greater community and not just ourselves. Thank you very much to the staff. Our staff has just been, I, yesterday I said goodbye to the staff and the, as many of them I, I could find in the city hall, and that was painful. That, that's when the tears really float, but they have been so wonderful. You cannot know the... I'm afraid a few of them will never run for office because of what they have seen. But I would like to encourage more people to do so because it really is rewarding. It, you know that you're doing something important when you're here. It is onerous and it is time-consuming and, you know, you get, you get tired of all the meetings and all the emails and everything. But at the same time, you know that you're doing something that has a greater good for a bigger purpose. And I thought it was really interesting hearing our Iranian community speaking tonight because I think it's so easy for us in the United States of America to forget how blessed we are and how remarkable it is that we can say things that other people don't like and we don't get killed or imprisoned for it. We still get to speak and, and try to state our truth. And that was my other goal in serving on council was that I wanted to show that this job could be done with grace and kindness and intelligence and integrity and not with mean-spiritedness. I have to say that I really came to like the members of the, of the council that I have served with. And even when I disagreed with them on things, it was possible, in my mind, for us to disagree and to still be agreeable. And I think that is the goal that I would like to see in the future is that if we can get away from some of the nastiness and some of the mean-spiritedness and really understand that even if we disagree, we're all members of the same team. And so, you know, I don't know how successful I've been in that goal, but I think that, you know, people have told me that they, I felt like I failed because I didn't get all the problems solved that I wanted to get solved during my term. And many people have told me that I haven't inspired them to be willing to run for public office in the future, especially young people. That really has meant more than anything to me. And it's kind of, I got to the point that I said, "Okay, so my purpose was not to solve all these problems. My purpose, perhaps, was just to inspire one or two other people to do this job with dignity and respect for their fellow council members and respect for all the citizens and to do it in a way that actually benefits our greater community and not just ourselves." Thank you very much to the staff. Our staff has just been, I, yesterday, I said goodbye to the staff and the, as many of them I could find in the city hall, and that was painful. That, that's when the tears really float. But they have been so wonderful. You cannot know the depth of integrity and dedication that our city staff shows. It's not easy to work for politicians. You know, they know that their boss is beholden to us to make sure that she keeps her job and that she's able to continue to manage our city staff. It is not easy. It's really asking a lot. And when people criticize our city staff, I really would just encourage no one to do that. They are trying their best and they're working within the confines of a political environment. So, I wanted to thank our city staff. I wanted to thank all of my supporters and all of the citizens who have, they say this is a thankless job. That is so untrue. I have never been thanked so much in my life as I have been since I've been serving on city council. And it really is meaningful. It really means something to, I know, all of us when we hear the citizens say, "Thank you for your service" and to appreciate how much time and energy goes into this. So, I would just say, like to say thank you to my colleagues and the staff and all the citizens of Newport Beach for allowing me to serve.
It's a great segue to my comments. People often state that being a city council member is a thankless job. That is true. That has not been my experience serving the residents of Newport Beach. I say often, it's been the honor of a lifetime to work for you and I appreciate the gratitude shown towards me and my family on a regular basis. I am proud to say that together, we accomplished much. We cut the dock tax, returned property rights to homeowners, took aggressive measures to pay down the city's long-term unfunded pension liabilities, doing so faster than any other city in the county of Orange. Added police officers and bolstered resources to our first responders. Pursued solutions available to us for the growing homelessness problem caused by the state. Doing everything we could within the rules given to cities by activist judges. And most importantly, we stood for the freedom while many did nothing and actually worked to deprive citizens of their God-given rights. I believe that history will continue to treat advocates for freedom with honor and show contempt for tyrants that have made the lives of their citizens difficult, of course, imposing rules and mandates that they themselves do not follow. I would like to thank each member on city council, present and past. Thank you for tolerating my references to Washington and Reagan and obscure mentions of genealogy. I would like to thank our staff, many of whom have become personal friends. Thank you for your hard work and diligence. I'd like to thank my family, Cannon, Taylor, and of course, my beautiful wife Heather. I could not have done it without you guys and I wouldn't want to do this life without you. I look forward to the numerous adventures ahead and I love you. Lastly, of course, I'd like to again thank the residents of Newport Beach for this honor of a lifetime. Eight years ago tonight, I took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution. I did so to the best of my capabilities. Still, placing the words, "In God We Trust" in the council chambers is a contribution I personally am most glad to have made. I remember we decided on placing it in the back of the chambers so we, the members of the council, may look at it while deliberating and voting on issues important to the city. I know my colleagues will remain on, who remain on this council and newly let to council members will look up to the phrase and consider his presence. I pray the residents of Newport Beach, along with our neighbors throughout the country, continue to make the Lord our God. As my last official comment as the mayor of Newport Beach, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. On to the certification of the general municipal election results. Madam Clerk?
The resolution confirms the results of the election and Newport Beach's voter turnout was over 65 percent. And following the announcement of the vote, Mayor Muldoon and Councilmembers Brenner and Duffield are welcome to join their families in the audience. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion? Moved by Councilman O'Neill. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Blom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
Duffield. It's been an absolute pleasure being up here with you.
Now is the time for the administration of the oath. This is the time for administration of the oath to the newly-elected council members. I will be calling each council member individually and their families, along with the person who will be administering the oath. First, can I have Councilmember Robin Grant and her family come forward? Along with Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce President, former mayor, and her brother, Steve Rosansky, to administer the oath to Councilmember Grant.
By the microphone, so I take it up? Does it raise the hand thing? I, Robin Grant.
I, Robin Grant.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties about, upon which I am about to enter.
One is a piece of advice. Leave it better than you found it. The other thing. Is my counsel pen? I hope you wear it proudly.
Councilmember Grant, you may take your, a seat. Next, can I please have Councilmember Lauren Kleiman and her family come forward and I'm honored to administer the oath to her? Stand there and right hand up. Please raise your right hand. I, Lauren Kleiman.
I, Lauren.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend.
Constitution of.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any.
Without any mental reservation.
Or.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
That I will well and faithfully.
Next, can I please have Councilmember Joe Stapleton and his family come forward? Along with Superior Court Judge, there he is, and former mayor, Steve Bromberg, to administer the oath.
So, how you doing, Joe?
I'm doing well.
All right. Could you raise your hand, would you? Okay. Please repeat after me. I, Joe Stapleton.
I, Joe Stapleton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
His wife, Newport Mesa Unified School District trustee, Krista Wigan, will administer the oath to Councilmember Wigan.
It's like we're giving our vows again. I, Eric Kenneth Wigan.
I, Eric Kenneth Wigan.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States of America.
To the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'll turn the floor over to the city clerk to conduct the mayor election.
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. Note that I have seven mayor and seven mayor pro tem nameplates have been created for the reorganization process. The same procedure will also be followed for the selection of mayor pro tem. Nominations do not require a second, they are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second, it is not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results will be read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done verbally. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I nominate Mayor Pro Tem Noah Blum.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to close vote.
Is there a second to close?
I'll second.
Okay, by a show of hands. Okay, by a show of hands, all in favor of closing nominations, please raise your hand. There are none opposed. Congratulations, Councilmember Blum. You are now the mayor for 2022-23. Please take your seat at the mayor's chair.
This is time for the city council to conduct the election of the mayor pro tem. Nominations are now opened. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Councilman Will O'Neill for mayor pro tem.
Are there any other nominations for mayor pro tem? Seeing no further nominations, there is a motion to second... to close? Any motion? To close?
I'll move to close.
Motion by Councilmember Kleiman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Stapleton. By a show of hands, all in favor of closing nominations. Any opposed?
Yeah, congratulations, Mayor... or Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill. Please take your seat next to Mayor Blum.
This is my favorite part of the reorganization. Are we going to play some music? Madam Clerk, the remainder of the city council will seat themselves pursuant to seniority, then highest margin of victory percentage. So... Is everyone seated where they would like? I didn't think so. So, you guys feel free.
Brad goes first.
Brad? Brad likes this seat right there. That's perfect. Okay, and I believe next, Robin. Where would you like to... Perfect. Eric? Mr. Stapleton?
I will stay here.
All right. I'm not going to lie, the ends are the best. You can spread out far and above the most. A lot of great space over there. Wonderful.
Now that you are all comfortable, can we take a group photo?
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two. Perfect.
We will now hear from the newly elected council members. Councilmember Grant.
Good evening and welcome. I am grateful to be sworn in today as your new city council member. Thank you to the residents and everyone who supported me this last year, and especially to the members of Newport Beach Police, Fire, and Lifeguard Departments for their confidence in my leadership. I am truly excited about the possibilities for this dynamic city we all love. People come here from around the world to enjoy our world-class beaches, famous harbor, thriving business community, and wonderful residential villages we are fortunate to call Newport Beach home. I ran on a platform of leading starts with listening. My number-one priority is to be accountable to the residents and provide transparent and independent leadership. I look forward to the next four years working with our talented and dedicated staff and my council colleagues to keep Newport Beach the best place to live, work, visit, and raise a family. Thank you all.
Round seat. Thank you, Councilmember Grant. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you. I first wanted to start by thanking Joy Brenner for her dedicated support for Corona del Mar and District Six residents, and of course, Councilmember Duffield and... Where is... Muldoon? For their eight years of service as well. I truly am humbled to have received the trust of our Newport Beach voters in representing our wonderful city. And I'm truly grateful for all of the support that I've received from our community, from my colleagues, from our first responders, and most importantly, from my family. My best friend Mark really stepped up as a father and as a husband to allow me the opportunity to set a good example for our 10-year-old son. And Pierce patiently endured more than his fair share of civics conversation over the dinner table and probably the breakfast table, too. But I'm hopeful that I planted some seeds of interest for him and his peers. I am really looking forward to serving with this incredible group of individuals up here on the dais and working with our very talented and capable staff under the leadership of our new Mayor Blum in the year to come. Together, we will leave this city better than we found it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kleiman. Councilmember Stapleton, a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, what a journey, what a humbling experience, what a utopia that we live in here we call Newport Beach. It didn't happen by accident. It's because of strong leadership, and I'm honored and humbled to do my part of continuing that legacy and protecting our quality of life. I want to begin by thanking the people of Newport Beach for their trust in me to represent and serve for the next four years. I would also like to thank all the council members who have come before us, and especially Diane Dixon, Kevin Muldoon, Duffy Duffield, and Joy Brenner for their recent service to our city and the sacrifices made by their families. I must thank my biggest cheerleader, Julie. She's my biggest supporter, and I couldn't have done this without her support. She moved here in August, in the middle of the campaign, and she was with me every step of the way. I want to thank you, Judge Bromberg, for swearing me in. A memory I will not forget: You are part of the legacy of strong leadership who came before us, and I look forward to making you proud. Thank you to my mom who's here tonight and my father who's looking down. They set the example for me of what community service looks like. To my sisters here tonight, thank you for always being so supportive. I'm so proud of all that you've accomplished and all that you do to make your community better than you found it. To my campaign team, to Riley Hayes, Lauren Haringa, Alexandra Taylor, and Brandon Powers, thank you for the movement that we created. I'm forever indebted to your loyalty. To my Spinnaker family, especially my partners Morgan and Andrew, I know the last 18 months were intense, but I appreciate all your continued support in my journey for community service. There are so many supporters here tonight. I have thanked all of them personally and look forward to their continued support. I can't thank each of you all here tonight, but suffice it to say that no person who has ever served in this role did it without a team. We are fortunate to have a community of residents who are engaged and committed to maintaining the quality of life we've all become accustomed to. That contribution from each of us is what makes us Newport Beach. I'm humbled and blessed, excited to continue moving forward on the right path with my fellow council members, our incredible city staff, our first responders, and you, the residents. We have a lot of work to do. I'm eager beginning to do that work to do my part in helping keep Newport Newport. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Weigand?
I've been told you can't be bad when you're brief, but unfortunately, I'm going to violate those words. It is an honor of a lifetime to be able to represent the residents of our great city of Newport Beach. First off, I want to thank my beautiful and talented wife Krista for not only swearing me in, but for being my number-one supporter. You have been by my side throughout this whole process, keeping me focused yet reminding me of the important things in life, two of which are Annie and Miles. Miles, what are you doing over there? As someone who grew up in the same neighborhood I live in today, I have the opportunity to share with them the same experiences I was afforded. I look forward to helping shape their future both as a parent and as a policymaker. And I wouldn't have had those opportunities and experiences if it wasn't for my mom, who is here today. She not only decided to raise me in this great city, but she personally gave 33 years of her life to the Newport Beach Police Department. She worked hard to make our city a wonderful place to live. Mom, I'll do my best to get this council to agree to annex your sliver of Costa Mesa into Newport Beach. A couple of other special friends have come today to share this moment with me. Ted Stell not only helped me get out of my Algebra I class at Newport Harbor High School, but he got me involved with politics in the first place. Pasquale Talarico, Tim Kearns, they're both amazingly talented individuals who helped me on the campaign by providing advice, expertise, and the technological tools to connect me with the community. Lastly, joining me today are my extremely supportive in-laws, Steve and Linda Elliott. When you marry somebody, you never know how you'll interact with your spouse's parents. For me, I've been blessed to have you in my life. There are many, many people who have helped me throughout my life and on the campaign trail. You know who you are: Alberto, TJ, Mike, Randall, Johnny. I am grateful, and many others, and you know who you are. And I'm grateful and thankful for everyone's support over the years and throughout this process. I'd like to thank our outgoing council members Brenner, Dixon, Duffield, Muldoon. Your support of my candidacy is heartfelt. Your commitment to our city over the years has been appreciated, and we are extremely grateful for your service. Mayor Blum, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill, and Councilmember Avery, I also thank you for your support during the campaign, and I look forward to working with you as we move into the future. My new colleagues, Councilmembers Grant, Kleiman, and Stapleton, I've enjoyed your company and seeing you in action throughout the campaign. I look forward to serving with you as well. To those who ran and were not successful, your passion and service and desire for our city was noticed. I'm hopeful you'll stay engaged. Mr. Moser, I know you will. To those who did not support me during the election, I am hopeful you will see my passion for our city. While I did not receive your vote, I promise I will work hard, serving ethically and honorably. During the next four years, there will be challenges, surprises, accomplishments, disappointments, ups, downs, and all arounds. My goal will be to be a consensus builder and someone you can count on to be a consistent leader for everyone. Newport Beach is a special place for us all. As your council member, I look forward to serving. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Weigand. I just have a few quick words to say, and I think the one thread that connected all of these speeches together was passion. I think every single person that chooses and decides to sit up here has passion for this city, and passion in a way that affects different parts in different ways that we all live here. And I think that is the idea of what a council of peers is about. We sit up here to converse and make the best decisions we can from different perspectives and different views. And I'm so proud of the people that have come before us. I've learned so much from Duffy. He's been amazing up here, added a sense of levity and humor when sometimes it was insane. I've learned so much from Councilman O'Neill, who's come up here with so much knowledge sometimes you wish he would stop. Councilman Avery, who really just wants to get back to the harbor, but we love him for making it here every day anyway. Thank you. And all of our new colleagues. I think they bring a new perspective and a new sense of what we can continue to make Newport what it is. Newport's here because we all care. No one goes through this process, and all the new four council members will tell you it's hell. It is a process that you wonder continuously why you are doing this. You're doing it because you have more passion than somebody else, and we want to inspire that amongst everybody. So, I thank everyone that's new up here. I'm so looking forward to serving with each one of you and hearing each of your opinions because it helps shape the roundness and success of what our community is. So, here's to all of you. Thank you so much for being here with us. I bet you thought it would all be over right there, didn't you? The meeting is not over. There's more city business that we need to take care of prior to the adjournment. Now it's time for public comments on Consent Calendar Items 18 and 19. No, you're good. Do any council members want to report on these items?
No.
There isn't... not seeing none of here. Mayor Pro Tem, do we have a motion?
Ah, I've done this for two years. Here we go. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve items 18 and 19 on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Grant. Let's vote.
With a show of hands, actually. All in favor? That's unanimous, 7-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of Kenneth Weigand. Councilmember Weigand?
Yes, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting and honor my father, Kenneth Roger Weigand, who passed away last Thursday, December 8. Born in Cincinnati, Ohio, my dad was adopted and raised by my grandparents, who moved to Newport Beach in 1960s. My dad attended Ensign Interminium at school and graduated from Newport Harbor High School in 1972, where he lettered in golf and was a reporter for The Beacon, Newport Harbor's newspaper. One evening, my dad and a few neighborhood friends thought throwing eggs at the Mariners' Branch Library was a good idea. After being caught by Newport's finest and thrown in our local jail, he developed an interest in law enforcement. Serving as one of Newport Beach Police Department's first explorers, he subsequently graduated from LAPD's Police Academy and became a police officer in 1975. During his time at Newport Beach PD, he served as a beat coordinator, field training officer, traffic investigator, traffic accident investigator, motor officer, crime scene investigator, burglary detective, and was a member of the special enforcement team. He was twice a recipient of the Award of Merit, once for using his skills at fingerprint identification, which led to the capture of wanted fugitives, and another for his investigation and detective work that led to the complete shutdown of an auto theft ring which had been plaguing the city. Reggie Jackson's car was recovered, but it was all but in pieces. Wishing to pursue his interests in detective work, my dad left the department in 1986 and joined the Orange County District Attorney's Office, where he served as an investigator. He worked in the family support and gang unit divisions until his retirement in 2003. He loved golf, the Cincinnati Reds, the Dallas Cowboys, spending time at the local coffee shop and having a good laugh. He lived in Prescott, Arizona, until his passing and is survived by his wife, Joanne. Please join me in honoring Kenneth Weigand by adjourning tonight's meeting in its honor. Thank you.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.